This program is brought to you by cable franchise fees and generous donations from viewers like you.
Seeing a presence of a quorum, I'm calling to order this meeting of the Amherst Pelham Regional School Committee at 6:33 PM on Tuesday, September 8th. And we will start with a roll call attendance. When I call your name, please say present. Mr. Demling?
Demling, present.
Mr. Harrington?
Harrington, present.
Ms. Kenny? Ms. Lord?
Lord, present.
Ms. Seeger?
Seeger, present.
Ms. Stanser?
Stanser, present.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, present.
And McDonald, present. Moving on to our first order of business is a public comment for regional topics only. And we have two written comments, which I will now share. For those folks watching at home, these are not yet posted on the website, but they will be posted tomorrow. Can folks see this comment? Is it better? Okay, that is all that we have this evening. So with that, we'll move on to our continuing business discussion of athletics for fall 2020 with a possible vote. As a reminder, this is a continuation of the discussion that we had last week. With, can I see Victoria Stewart has joined us and gave us a presentation a week ago on MIAA guidance and changes, modifications to various sports for the fall.
Yep, and I'll just queue it up for Ms. Stewart, which is thank you for the feedback last week and that discussion. And with that, Ms. Stewart did some more work, got some good questions from individual committee members. So thank you. That's really helpful. And she's prepared tonight to make a recommendation for your consideration and just discussion and consideration with potential vote. As I think I emailed you last week, there's some nice summaries of what surrounding districts, what decisions they've made. So hopefully that was helpful also to understand what neighboring districts done. The only other one that I believe hasn't voted that's proximate to us, at least that I'm in a lot of communication with is Northampton. And they're voting on Thursday night. So I'll queue up the slides for you, Ms. Stewart. And I'll turn it to you.
All right. So thanks for having me back again, guys. From our discussion, I just wanted to recommend the following sports. So as we spoke about cross-country, I think all the ones on the list are very doable to do. And fortunately for volleyball, someone, we have an anonymous donor who donated two nets. So that allows us for outdoors. So we can, I just met with DPW this morning. They were great. He was like, we can put in these two courts easily or field courts, I guess you can call them because they'll be on the grass. As flat as we could find them. It's a good opportunity for the kids to be able to play outdoors. There is one school doing all outdoor volleyball, which is Esang Meadow. Other ones are going to be doing indoors, but I was thinking if you guys are comfortable with indoors, we could maybe have practices outdoors to limit the amount of times players are indoors. Or we can just do outdoors, just so they have an opportunity to play. Soccer, a lot of people, a lot of schools surrounding us, they're allowing soccer as well, as well as field hockey across country. And then the only one that I don't recommend at this time is golf. And I think we spoke about it a little bit before, but Amherst Golf. In the last like week and a half, they got 32 more members with this college students back, even though, you know, UMass isn't really on campus. You know, some of them already got their apartments beforehand and when school got canceled, so they are going to the course. And it's hard to control what goes over there versus all the sports that we can have on our own field. It's easier to control what goes on. If you guys have any questions about that right now. Ms. Stanser?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Since there's only one more slide, maybe I thought Ms. Stewart could just talk about this last slide. Because actually I think it provides a helpful context to some of the questions that were asked last week. And then we could open for questions if that's okay with Ms. McDonald and Ms. Stewart.
That's fine with me.
Okay.
Um, so then there's also other things like the additional expenses that are going to go in because, you know, COVID is obviously present. So transportation, again, really transportation to games, we're going to have to get maybe two times the buses. Or we're going to need parent guardian help. Waivers are going to have to be done for transportation to games. So that's another expense that we have to be, have, we need to have in the back of our minds. Athletic equipment. So it's interesting, we're allowed to have games, but if you look at the modifications, this wasn't really in it from the previous presentation. But practices, they do need like volleyball, they all need their own ball, issued balls every single practice. Same as soccer. So that's something we'll probably have to get a few more balls again in 10 days because it, sports would start September 18th. Game management, more like so like security and, because we don't know if we're going to have fans yet. Some schools are having fans, some aren't. But that's just something we need to keep in the back of our mind. And video streaming possibly, just so parents and guardians and fans have an opportunity to watch. I know a lot of people would like to watch. Again, at this point in time, it's really for just the kids to be able to play. However, that's what we may need to add. And then other PE items for coaches, also our athletic trainer. Sometimes I hop on the field as well. Just things like that we have to keep in the back of our mind are going to be additional expenses.
Yeah. And the reason, you know, we brought this up, a couple of committee members, it came up a little bit last week. But also since last week, there's been a lot of questions about, you know, the costs and couldn't we provide more transportation? I think, you know, frankly, with half the number of students that would typically be on a bus, it's going to be more challenging to get particularly some of the teams that are larger. Like, you know, mild sport, cross-country and other ones, you know, where there aren't cuts and how to get that number of students off to a competition elsewhere. There also are some events that typically would have been out of state and we're not in the space right now where we'd be considering out of state events. So, so there are some additional expenses and limitations that come along with it. I support Ms. Stewart's recommendations in many ways because of the kind of both well-being implications, both physical and non-physical well-being implications of being active. And frankly, our students are actively playing these sports as is. And I'd rather have it governed with rules that we feel like promote safety as opposed to having students participate in these sports on their own without some of those safety measures. So for me, it's a hard one because I think, you know, a number of committee members talked about how awkward it is to talk about having athletics and not school on, in-person school, excuse me. On the 18th of September, at the same time, I think it's in students' best interest. And we know students haven't been involved through the school and organized athletics for quite some time. And just living here and driving around town, you'll see students participating informally in these activities. So we'd rather have them do it in a more controlled environment than what would happen without, not under the auspices of the athletic department and the school. So for me, that's, you know, how I came to my conclusion to support this. And, you know, I thank Ms. Stewart and her team for doing all the work about what are the modifications and the coaches who have been patiently waiting. And, and again, we'll go with the school committee, obviously how they vote, but that's sort of where we're sitting at the moment. Thanks for your indulgence to, you know, roll through that second slide, but I thought it might have implications for questions to come from the first.
Thank you.
Ms. Stanser?
I am going to strongly disagree with not recommending that you play golf this fall. Almost all of the students who are going to be on the golf team have been playing at Amherst and other golf courses in the area during the summer. The golf courses all have rules about dealing with COVID, wearing masks when approached, not handling the, the flag in the holes, not raking the straps. When the students are on the course, they are not going to be playing in a group with somebody who is not a student. They are going to only be playing with other students who are there to compete. So there may be other people at the course, but they are not going to be anywhere near the students on the course. And I think that the students, along with the coach, can keep the students separated from other people when they're not playing. And I guess I don't understand when you say this is out of our control. Our students in all the other sports are going to other places to play. So I don't understand why you consider the Amherst golf course to be any different than other locations that you're going to play. Thank you.
Ms. Lord? Or Ms. Stewart, did you want to, did you want to?
One more point, which is that I looked through the list of sports, the schools that are recommending, there's not a single school that did not recommend playing golf.
I just, one thing, I just think it's important to also look at our location. There's benefits and there's also, you know, non-benefits of living in a college town. But there are, you know, we can't control everyone that's in our town that uses a course. Not everyone lives surrounded by a couple of colleges actually in their town, or a few, I guess we should say. And then the other thing is our coach, our coaches perspective is really big to me as well. So when someone doesn't feel comfortable and has addressed it for a majority of the summer and has done a lot of research on the golf board at the Amherst Golf. I take his perspective into consideration highly.
Ms. Lord?
Thank you, Ms. Stewart, for your presentation last week. Sorry, I wasn't very verbal, but dealing with migraine this week, I'm better. I appreciate that volleyball would be mostly outside, only indoor for games, as I understand it. The equity issue that was brought up last week, I think, is always a continued equity issue. Who has the money? Even on free and reduced, it still costs money to be a participant, still costs money for parents to come and see. So I'm hoping that post-pandemic, we can work on these issues of equity, even transportation. How do I pick up my child at 10 when I've got two and three-year-olds at home? So, sorry, I get a little bit caught up in my brain. But I just wanted to thank you for addressing some of the issues. And at the same time, I've heard some questions about why are we going to not do in-person in-school but sports? And I tell people it's a lot easier to be outdoors than it is to prepare and get ready for our HVAC and our standards that we have set that are really safe and strict. To make sure the safety is for all of our students inside. So that's my comment for now.
Thank you. Mr. Demling and then Mr. Harrington?
So for the options for volleyball, I guess, I guess I wanted to clarify. So, um, so the word on that line that I like is outdoors, because that's obviously the problematic aspect of volleyball here. And, you know, this is a hard one for me because I, I know that for students who this is their thing, this is a very important thing to lose. You know, at the same time, there are other very important things that students are losing. And so, you know, I mean, I want to be transparent that if we vote not to support volleyball, we're voting not to support something that's very important to a number of students and families. But, you know, we need, we need to do what we have to do. The sort of principle I'm trying to approach this with is yes, of course, outside of school. Students and parents are going to choose to do what they're going to do. And, and we don't have any control of that. We don't have total control over students outside of school. But when it's within a school sanctioned activity, we do. And so that's why we're voting on this tonight, right? And so that is like, that's kind of the point of view I'm approaching this from is that if, if I'm going to make a vote about sanctioning volleyball. I am in some way saying, I feel that we have the necessary appropriate safeguards for our students to participate in it safely. So are we saying, so just to specific to volleyball then on that point, are we saying that, that the only option is for outdoor practice and indoor games? Because the, because right now, the way I'm feeling is I'm not, I haven't heard anything so far that would make me comfortable with indoor volleyball activity. So, so are there options that we could approve tonight that would have volleyball exclusively outdoors?
Yeah, if you guys want to vote on having volleyball outdoors only, I will definitely go with it. Like you said, I, some people say like, oh, what if we do it in the spring? Well, things change. Not necessarily, right? We kind of know all those things may happen and may occur, so we may need to do it outdoors anyways. And they will have the same rules. So I think, yeah, we can do it outdoors, everything, games, practices.
Mr. Harrington had his hand up earlier and then Ms. Spitzer, I see your hand.
Alright, so, yeah, I actually couldn't be there for the presentation last time, so I had to go back and do my homework. I just want to make sure I have my Cliff Notes right here. So, uh, so as somebody who ran cross-country, played soccer, there were some like adjustments to the game that I noticed, some, some very significant adjustments. And I was just wondering, A, are those like mutually agreed upon throughout the MIAA? Or is this like our own decision? And then, and then also, there were some specifics that I want to make sure I had right. So for cross-country, if we're, you know, we're away from the pack, the pack catches up, they would then dawn a mask, is the thinking? I think that's what I heard. And then on soccer, I had heard there was no throw-ins and no punts from goalies. So basically we wouldn't handle the ball at all. Are those accurate?
Well, goalies will be able to like handle the ball. If they punt the ball, they're going to have to make sure their punts accurate. It can't go over midfield in the air. So if it hits it, if it hits the ground, the ball hits the ground before it hits midfield, you're fine. And yes, all of these are MIA modifications. So all schools should be, will be following these rules. However, like schools can recommend, like we can recommend no gators are allowed. We want all like masks. So some schools are going to recommend those kinds of things and implement that, those rules into their systems. So if they have other rules, there may be more to them, like Esang Meadow is going to go outside, they're only doing outside. So if we play volleyball outside, that's what we're doing, even though we're allowed to play indoors at other places.
Yeah. So the concern isn't the handling of the ball, it's where the ball will be placed essentially.
Yeah, I think they mainly did that because there's no headers. So it's going to be, I don't know, you can kick the ball all the way down the field. And you're going to let it land and let it bounce until you can actually get it with your feet and, or your chest. Yeah.
Ms. Spitzer?
All right, you hear me now. Sorry. So thank you again for, for this presentation and for answering all of our questions. I have a question though, actually related to what you were just saying with, so volleyball was a sport that I was also concerned about playing indoors. And primarily because, as we noted last week, that space hasn't been evaluated yet for the, whether or not it meets ASHRAE standards, I believe. So one thing I was wondering is if maybe that would be something that we would, I don't know if there's potential for us to be able to do that before we'd allow folks to play indoors. But I think that would be a reasonable thing to look into. Also, if we say, we say we're only doing outdoor volleyball, but then they go play against a team that is having indoor volleyball. Then essentially our kids are going to be going into a building to play volleyball. Like, or would we only play with other schools where they'd have agreed to the same standard of we're only doing this outdoors? Because it seems like the same issue with that, you know, that the golf course is bringing up is, is actually irrelevant here, that we can't necessarily control what's happening. And then I, I guess the, the other question, you know, I, you brought up the issue of fans. I generally, I know it's a lot of parents and friends and caregivers really enjoy watching their kids compete. But that to me makes me really nervous, the idea of having large groups of people coming together. So I think if I were to vote for this, I, I don't yet feel comfortable with folks attending these events live. Or if we do, I think it would definitely need to be capped. And I don't know how you would enforce that. Like, how do you make sure that we don't have very large gatherings at these events? I want to, I'm concerned about that. And then my final comment was how is this going to be tied to metrics? So say that, I think the numbers right now are looking really good. But if we do see some sort of increase, maybe it's not tied to the fact that we're doing sports. How are we going to roll back or what are the? Can we, will we tie this to the metrics that we're using for our other phases? And if we're not going to tie it to that, is there something like an off switch that there is in case we see numbers rising? And finally, I just want to say, like, I'm, I'm supportive of this for the same reasons that Dr. Morris said. It gets almost like a harm reduction strategy. I think it's like, we know folks are going to be out there. And I think it's the best thing you can do right now is to get exercise and spend times outdoors. So I want to encourage our students to do it, but I want to make sure it's done safely and that we're not potentially endangering our ability to have kids come into the buildings and get education by creating situations where we have large groups of people getting together. So, thank you very much.
And there were several questions. I don't know if Dr. Morris or Ms. Stewart, if you wanted to respond before we go to the next question from Ms. Stanser.
So I think I got fans was a concern. There was a question about volleyball. And would we only play either home games or at other schools that had outdoor courts? Those were the two that seemed, and then the, the one about metrics. And at what point we say we can't do, are those the three core questions?
Um, yes, those are the core questions, those three.
Okay. Well, I'll turn it to Ms. Stewart for, for at least a couple of them. So Ms. Stewart, do you want to talk about volleyball?
Yeah. So volleyball and traveling, yeah, like you said, how golf, you don't have control of what goes on in other places. You'll know that they're following the MIA rules at the golf course. It's a public course where they're not following the MIA rules per se. So like the masks, yeah, they're going to be separated, but again, you know, you could potentially meet up with someone in a parking lot. Or like the rules are going to be really particular for every school entrances, exits, and they'll have to be followed. Yes, there are rules at the golf course right now. I'm not saying there, there are no rules at the golf course. However, they don't all follow the MIA guidelines. As well as, I just think playing inside at our school, it may have started a little conflict with not having school in-person. And then, you know, being able to at least play outside, that's why we would play at our place outside. So we don't have any of that conflict going around, saying that we don't let people into our school and kids to learn. So then they'll have the opportunity to still play, practice, but they can go travel somewhere else. And then as far as fans go, there are rules. But again, like I said before, my biggest thing is saying, okay, we can't have fans is not an issue to me as of right now. Because I think parents, guardians and even, you know, maybe senior nights are different. Like, maybe we'll have something else in place for that, but it's all about the kids right now. So I'm just concerned that they all have a place to play. And then there's also rules of like 50% capacity outside on each field. If you have like a stadium and like 50 max in certain facilities. So those are things that we could also look at. But again, like I said before, I'm fine with no fans, let the kids play. And do you want to speak on the other question or all three?
Yeah. So I think the metrics thing, I think is this one because it traverses many different geographical regions. I think this is where some of the kind of regional average in the state jumping in actually makes sense. I mean, I think you've heard my comments about some of the state maps and different things when it relates to our community and looking at it differently. But I, you know, my sense from MIAA and from DESI is that they're going to be looking at regional numbers about allowing, you know, what metrics do they need to allow for athletics? That perhaps might be a little bit different because it is, in our case anyway, all outside versus being inside. So, you know, my sense is that that'll be more of a state decision, looking at regional numbers. Because I think just even hearing Ms. Stewart's comments about other districts, you realize it's a pretty wide area that our students would be competing with. It definitely covers at least the three counties, if not more, for certain sports depending on their conference and division alignment. So it's less localized than, than almost everything else we do.
Ms. Stanser?
Do you have any sense yet at all about referees? Whether you're going to be able to get referees and are they going to be responsible for making sure students put masks on when they're supposed to? And in a cross-country race, you know, is somebody going to be monitoring to make sure that masks are donned appropriately? But mostly, I'm just wondering about the situation with referees, because a lot of the referees are older people, retired people.
That's actually a great question. So as athletic directors, we're really going to have to work on scheduling games so that we do have enough referees. There's some soccer referees that don't feel comfortable refereeing the game, but there's definitely ways around it. I mean, we, we deal with that issue without, you know, these kinds of situations. So there are less referees that feel comfortable refereeing these kinds of games, just because it's not their usual game they're used to refereeing. And then I also think, that's also where I was saying, we could be paying more people to just pay attention, game managers. That's where expenses could come in, instead of leaving it all on coaches. We would also use, you know, my staff, myself included, I'm at most of the games and especially this year, we'll definitely be at probably all the games. So just to make sure that these rules are being followed throughout. And I guess, yeah, cross-country would be difficult just because we're going, going everywhere. But we do have a huge parent, fan volunteers that normally help out with that. Just like with the whole making sure people know their turns, because you can get lost more often than not as well.
I think I'll just add a couple of thoughts before going on to Mr. Demling. I saw your hand too. I, so thinking about the outdoors volleyball, I think that's, thank you to the, the family or whomever it was, the anonymous donor that came forward for those, those nets. That is a tremendous gift. And also in, in that it enables these, this team to be able to continue to play outdoors. And I know we heard last week that, that a lot of the, that there was some volleyball game leagues happening over the summer and they were outdoors and they had great experiences with that. So that gift is much appreciated. And I do, I also think it's interesting, but I would prefer to see all the games outdoors. But knowing that, that the students, when they travel to, to away games, they'll be indoors. You know, will be trusting the fact that these other schools and districts will be following and adhering to the MIAA guidelines. And presumably there will be some sort of enforcement mechanism to make sure that that is happening. Regarding game management and fans, because I think the two are really tied, I would, I would also agree that no fans at least to start is, is the best option. Just to make sure that our kids can play. But I do think, no matter what we decide with fans, a game manager to, or monitor to be able to support that. So that the, the coaches can focus on the game and their students, and their kids, their athletes. And during the game, referees can focus on, on what the gameplay and not have to be policing or monitoring parents or siblings that are running around on the, on the sides. I think that will be super important, whether or not we have fans. I suspect there will be some folks that will try, that will want to show up anyway. And so that will be also something for us to, to be managing. And I had another thought, but I can't remember it right now. So I'll, I'll turn it over to Mr. Demling who had, had his hand raised.
Yeah. So building on Ms. Lord's point a little bit before, so even in regular times, activity participation that requires a fee like sports is always going to have some level of inequity that we can't perfectly smooth out. And that's always something we should be working on, right? In a, in a atmosphere of continuous improvement. It's even more so in this situation because if you don't have transportation, you rely on your normal school day transportation to get you to school. So you can be there for practices and games. That's obviously not going to be there in this situation.
for practices and games. That's obviously not going to be there in this situation. And so, we're going to be relying on, you either have your own transportation, or you get it figured out somehow informally with your team. Now, I don't doubt the, you know, the supportive group cohesiveness of parent volunteers and people supporting each other, but that's, that's obviously an imperfect system that we can't formally rely on. So I guess, so Dr. Morris, I guess, one practical question is, I just wanted to get the confirmation of. I presume that it's not practical for us to run our entire bus system in the early afternoon, and then in the early evening, before and after practices and games, in order to accommodate that transportation issue, number one. I ask, just because I want to hear the answer publicly, because I've been asked the question multiple times this week. And two, you know, what can we do to facilitate what will be an imperfect, and you know, not perfectly equitable process if we approve sports, right? Is there like a way that we can have coaches or central administration just be a little more centrally organizing conscious about, hey, if you have a transportation issue, you know, send a message in, and we'll try and help coordinate the best we can. Something we can do to minimize the issue as much as possible. Right. So on the first question, you know, the answer is clearly no, that the folks who do our transportation runs are not, are contracted drivers. There are facilities maintenance staff who do bus runs, do work in facilities maintenance, do other bus runs. So they're already doing that. And at this point in time, cutting into facilities and management, schedule, those folks need all their attention to get ready for October 1st. And they'll need, that won't, it's not like kids come, and we're like, oh, good, all the facilities management work is finished. That work is all encompassing right now. And you know, students live all across town with the bus runs, you know, it's just, it's simply not possible. I think Ms. Stewart and I speak for her, share the same equity concerns. And I think, as it relates to that, I think coaches, but also captains, have already been, you know, working on these types of things, and thinking about reaching out to their teammates and trying to coordinate that. And I know that there's been caregiver volunteers who also are committed to that purpose. So I think it is difficult. I think as compared to perhaps some other times, there may be more flexibility for some about providing transportation for friends and colleagues, you know, with windows open, with masks, all the ways that we would want, you know, to keep things safe. But it's an imperfect solution, to use your word imperfect. It seems better than the alternative. But that's sort of where we are in terms of that. I wish we could use bus runs, but at this point, our focus for facilities folks has to be on getting schools ready to open. And this would be a huge undertaking. And I think to Ms. Spitzer's point from last week, it would raise a lot of equity issues the other way. So we're providing how much resources for athletics when we're not providing them for students who may have other extracurricular interests that we may not be, have capacity to pull off, or we've not figured out a way to do that. But maybe that will change, right? So we could be in a situation, week or two from now, where there might be other extracurriculars that we do have permission and are able to start running. And so it's not just athletics, you know, I think if we had, if we were going to provide transportation, we'd have to provide it for every extracurricular activity, whether it be drama, or arts, or clubs, or, you know, there's other activities that could occur perhaps before school starts, or in, before phasing starts at the secondary level. And so I think athletics is one part of that equation, but I certainly wouldn't want to set up a dynamic where we're providing transportation for one extracurricular activity, and not others. And if you've been at the high school at 3:30 in the afternoon on a typical day, you'll notice how many extracurricular activities are happening. It encompasses, frankly, much of the school population. So, you know, I think that's another equity concern that I have, which is if we're going to support this for athletics, would we support it for every other extracurricular activity, arts, music, drama, clubs, you know, you know, other activities? And so unfortunately, we're not there. I don't know if Ms. Stewart has anything else to add in terms of how teams are thinking about organizing for transportation. I think I captured our conversation. But if I didn't, let me know.
Ms. Kenny.
So first, I just wanted to say thank you to Ms. Stewart for all of the hard work you've put into the presentations and coming to
Ms. Kenny, I think it's hard to hear. I don't know if the volume is down on your microphone, but maybe it's me, but I think it was hard to, to make out what you were saying, not clarity perspective, just from a volume perspective.
Is that better?
It is.
Okay. No headphones tonight, then, I guess. So, okay, so where are they? So first, I just wanted to take a minute and say thank you to Ms. Stewart for not only putting all the presentation together and doing all the research about how our kids could have sports, but coming to talk to us. And, you know, I think all of our children have lost so much over the last six plus months. We've all been stuck at home. And I would feel, the feeling, the idea of taking something else away from them that we can do in a safe and reasonable way feels not good to me. And I know, like, having been a high school athlete, that I was a better student during sport seasons. So my grades were better, I got all my homework done, I was a happier, better, just a better human. And I still feel like that now, when I work out more and go for more runs, I'm a better person. So I think where, especially in the secondary schools, where the kids are going to be home and be in charge of their own learning for so much longer, that having something that feels good and is motivational for them to be part of their sports teams, and just to be with other people that don't necessarily live in their own house. Like, I think those pieces are going to be really, really important. So I would like to support the sports in any way we can, that's feasible, that we can get, get the kids back on their playing fields. So again, thank you for all the hard work and time you've put into this.
I think everybody's had a chance to speak up. I'll just pause for folks that haven't spoken or asked a question, and make sure that you're all set. Would anybody like to make a motion? Ms. Kenny?
So I move we allow, I'm not sure how all of these words would go together. All right. So I move that we allow sports to start in the fall 2020 season? Yes?
As recommended by Ms. Stewart?
Second.
Moved by Kenny, second by Demling. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Demling, and then Ms. Spitzer?
Yeah, Ms. Stewart, could you just clarify? So we just, the motion was as recommended by Ms. Stewart. Could you just, in your own words, describe what the volleyball season will be?
So that would be, oh, just volleyball season. So just volleyball would be, I get outdoors at Amherst, and then being able to play indoors when we travel. So practice outdoors, any games we host outdoors. So no one's coming into our building. And then we can travel still to other buildings and play.
That was a question that I had. Ms. Spitzer?
And could I clarify? Do we need to specify that we would not have fans in attendance? I'm just wondering if any of these modifications to the MIA rules as stated, or do we?
Dr. Morris?
Yeah, I would say that I don't think you need to vote on the fan piece. We certainly heard the opinion, and I think Ms. Stewart and I both agree with you. And I think if we get to the place where we would want to adapt that, we can come back to talk about it with this group.
Thank you. Ms. Lord?
And for families that don't feel comfortable with having their volleyball athletes play indoors, would there be an unpenalized option for those players to sit out of those such games?
That would, yeah, like, they can participate in practices, but that'd be every game but one, if we play, that's if we play East Long Island, which I would definitely try to do, just because we'll probably do masters at that point, because we have practice outside.
Thank you.
Great. Seeing no further discussion, we'll move to a roll call vote. When they call your name, please say your vote. Mr. Demling?
Demling, aye.
Mr. Harrington?
Harrington, nay.
Ms. Kenny?
Kenny, nay.
Ms. Lord?
Lord, aye.
Ms. Seager?
Seager, aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, aye.
Let's come back to you. Mr. Sullivan?
I'm going to abstain, because I missed most of the discussion.
McDonald, aye. And Ms. Dancer? Dancer, aye. And I'm sorry, Mr. Harrington, can you restate your vote? How you voted?
Nay.
That's fine. I, that's what I had recorded, but I wasn't sure. So the motion passes seven, seven to one with one abstention. Great. Thank you very much, Ms. Stewart. Very helpful discussion.
Thanks for having me again, guys.
Okay. And now we move on to our next item. So I will move, move that we enter into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation of APEA, UFCW, APAA, and AFSCME. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and the chair so declares, and I declare, with intention of returning to open session. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by McDonald, and second by Spitzer. We now take a roll call vote. Mr. Demling?
Demling, aye.
Mr. Harrington?
Harrington, aye.
Ms. Kenny?
Kenny, aye.
Ms. Lord?
Lord, aye.
Ms. Seager?
Seager, aye.
Spitzer, aye.
Ms. Dancer? Did she, I think she's left. Mr. Sullivan?
Sullivan, aye.
And McDonald, aye. So we Seeing the presence of a quorum, calling to order this meeting of the Amherst School Committee at 9:09 PM. And we will take a roll call attendance. Mr. Demling?
Demling, present.
Mr. Harrington?
Harrington, present.
Ms. Lord?
Lord, present.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, present.
And McDonald, present. Thank you. Chair, hall.
All right. Seeing the presence of a quorum, I'll call to order this meeting of the Pelham School Committee at the unprecedented hour of 9:09. And I'll start with a roll call attendance. Ms. Kenny?
Kenny, present.
Ms. Barlow?
Barlow, present.
Mr. Menino?
Menino, present.
Ms. Dancer? Dancer is present, waving. And Hall, present.
Excellent. So now, our first order is public comment, and we have one voice message for public comment this evening. So I will play that.
My name is Jeanne Fay. I'm a resident of Amherst, and I'm also a staff member working at Crocker Farm Elementary School. I'd like this to be included in the public comment for the joint committee. While I am happy that the air quality of our public schools is finally getting the attention it deserves, it's unfortunate that it took a pandemic to realize the effect of long-term underfunding of maintenance and facilities. Achieving healthy indoor air quality should be a long-term goal, not something that is only addressed in a crisis situation. Instead, proper maintenance of indoor air should be seen as an investment in the safety and well-being of our students and staff. I urge the school committee to look beyond the HVAC buzzwords. Educate yourselves about the benefits of a healthy indoor environment, as well as the problems poor indoor air quality causes, including aggravating asthmatic conditions and respiratory illnesses. My hope is that during the next budget cycle, there is more attention paid to maintenance and facilities. When our maintenance staff tell you they need more resources to do their jobs, believe them. Deferring routine maintenance in order to save money in the short term cannot only result in higher costs in the long term, but also health and safety implications. Thank
So now, we'll move on to the next item, which is our superintendent update.
I will be very brief on this one tonight, because most of the topics would come up in the agenda. But I want to thank Amherst Media. We've had an incredible number of meetings, many interrupted with executive sessions, and they wanted me to share that they've upgraded their systems. Hopefully, some of the quality of their viewers will be enhanced by their upgrading their systems, especially as they've often had multiple meetings. We're not the only committee that's meeting a lot this summer. So more of just a thank you to Amherst Media and sharing with the larger community they've upgraded, so that the community has better access to be, to their viewing pleasure of our meetings. So that's it for me tonight on that.
Thank you. From the chair's update, I don't have anything to update the committees on. Chair, Hall, do you have any updates?
No, I don't. Thanks.
Okay. School committee announcements. Does anybody have announcements to make? Ms. Dancer?
I'm not sure if this is the right place to do this, but I would just like to say to everybody out there, I really appreciate all of the emails that you've been sending us. I have to say that there are some days when I really didn't want my email, because I knew what I was going to read. And I just think it's so important to have as much feedback as possible, and you've certainly given it to us. I would also like to say that it's been a very anxiety-inducing time. But the fact that with almost no exceptions, every email has begun with something like, I understand what a difficult decision and difficult time this is for all of you, and really appreciate the time that you're spending. And that's made it a lot easier for me personally to proceed with what we're trying to do. So I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Seeing none, we'll move on to a new and continuing business, and turn it back over to Dr. Morris for the Fall 2020 update.
Yep. And I'll, I will try to be brief, given the hour. So I'll start with some good news, as thanks to hard work of our facilities, maintenance, and custodial departments, we now have tents up at four sites. So we've got one at the high school, which will have multiple, because of Summit and another piece. We have one at Crocker Farm, we have one at Fort River, we have one outside my general vicinity at the middle school. So I want to just give a sincere thanks. And, you know, as I am not technically inclined, I got to see the one coming up at the middle school. And the neat thing was, in addition to what it means for students, I got to see how they collaborate, how our staff collaborate, which I don't often get to see in real time, in terms of facilities maintenance. But they were working on a project, and because I was curious, because I failed at doing a very small version of what they were doing in my own life in the last couple weeks, it's now on the ground, in my house. It was just, it was pretty cool seeing now that goes there. And just the same problem solving that our teaching staff, our educator staff, I get to see more routinely, certainly goes on in very similar ways, frankly, with our facilities maintenance staff. So I appreciate their, their hard work and their collaboration. And they got two up today. So we went from one a day to two a day. So want to thank folks for that. And I've gotten a lot of questions of like, how quickly can we use it? And all that. And those are the kind of questions that get me excited, actually, you know, with all the other stuff swirling around. So want to let the community know that they're up. We're planning to use them as we go into in-person, and thank folks for their work. Another update is, I think I mentioned last week, that both for our binding survey for Phase One families, as well as our survey for the other families, we're pretty much stuck at about two-thirds to 70% of families wanting in-person. And you all looked at maps multiple times over the course And you all looked at maps multiple times over the course of the summer that assumed a hundred percent in-person. And again, some of the good news is that with sixty, sixty-five, seventy percent in-person, it means, for instance, at Fort River and Wildwood, we'll we'll we think we can get all the classrooms pretty much, if not all of them, into the havesies or the kindergarten rooms that we created. We won't necessarily need to take some of those other spaces uh for that. It means being able to expand our space, for instance, for specialized programs, to offer them more spaces. Um and so uh you know, it it's it's that's looking better Crocker Farm, where we were anticipating of a space issue. It's still tight, but the issues aren't as significant or severe when we look at that. Um so you know, we're glad we we did the quote-unquote worst-case scenario from space. Uh and now that we have more accurate data, we're able to scale back from that in more helpful ways, and we look, you know, our space diagrams, once we kind of get them back up again, will look a lot more amenable um and than than they did the last time around. So that is something I wanted to share. We are looking actively at spaces, and Nexus will be back in to test more spaces as we go through our phases. Uh but we're feeling really good about space in general in our schools, much more so than when we had a hundred percent, uh when we were assuming a hundred percent. Uh our professional development with um with uh G O A ended uh Friday for the secondary and today for the elementary. Uh there were some good quotes from staff members um that were, you know, emailed around in a in a final email at the secondary level. Um you know, I think some of them are worth just sharing aloud. You know, someone said for me, the big takeaway from this week is the great technology, that great technology does have the potential to build relationships, deepen access, and make online classes so much more engaging. Last spring, Google meetings were mostly like classes in real time where people talked about material, um which was so different than real-life classrooms where it's much more interactive. Um and so they they goes on to share that teacher's learning. Uh but one of the the one of the ones I actually liked the most, and I'll paraphrase it, was I don't get to see the great work across, especially at the high school. There's so there's so many departments, so many teachers. And one of the most enriching things about the P D was seeing what people are doing in an interdisciplinary way, that the the Health Department and the English Department, Social Studies Department were all doing similar work, and their message boarding, again, kind of messages on the message board were able to be seen. They were sharing of work and how we don't often do that enough. We don't actually share all the different work the different departments are doing in that way. And so that was really powerful for me as well. So you know, I thank staff for engaging in that work and being so committed to improving distance learning uh from last spring. I'm gonna be skipping around a little bit, coming on days. So you know, we we have worked out our staffing where we feel like we will be able to do some adjusted programming for uh students who choose a virtual option as well as the in-class. It'll be adjusted because it's the virtual doesn't kind of lend itself quite as well, but we'll we'll be able to offer some Spanish language uh courses to families who chose virtual. I want to thank Katie Richardson, Diane Chamberlain, and Renee um Greenfield for their work on creative work. It's it's it was a big puzzle, as all this stuff is, and and we feel good that we'll be able to offer uh not just a monolingual option for families who choose virtual. Won't be the same as the in-person option. Um but it'll be more than what we thought we'd offer at the beginning, and and kudos to them and the team for working on that. Uh last Friday, Danielle Seltzer, who's the president of the A P E A, our teachers and par educators and clericals uh union, and I sent out a message um staff that allowed for uh in-person meet and greets and orientations. If staff want, choose to do that outside um sometime in the next week. And so, you know, to be candid, uh teachers are just getting their class lists and getting information, be able to reach out to families, but um it really, it was a joint agreement and joint commitment that we wanted to open the door for teachers who wanted that experience for themselves and their students to be able to do it. Well, we won't do it in like Chromebook Pickup Day uh because the idea is that we would want to stagger those times so that we don't have too many people on the site uh from a health and safety perspective, but we that came from many teachers asking us, can we please have an orientation? Can we please please meet our students in person before virtual education starts? So uh that option's now available, and as staff are getting more and more information about their roles and who their students are, you know, you know, we'll we'll see more of that moving forward, but I want to appreciate the collaboration with the A P E A and Danielle on that. Um Thursday and Friday of this week, we're having caregiver trainings on Google Classroom. Um they're kind of, we tried to pick the middle of the day so that hopefully it's like lunch break-ish for many families, eleven forty-five. The email went out today for that information. If people can't make it, the YouTube links will be live links uh that will be accessible anytime. So they're they're automatically recorded uh on the distance learning website, which was emailed out last week. There's also other videos that people can access. We're working on translations and other things for that, but uh that's part of an ongoing series that we we plan to be able to provide more ongoing supports for caregivers than we did uh last spring. So I want to thank our three distance learning coaches, Amali Ella and Jay Sri uh for their work. You know, they cover both the Pelham Schools, the Amherst Elementary Schools, and the regional district, there's one from each district that have been working on this, uh supporting staff, but also supporting parents in our community. Um I think the last thing is just a little bit about the elementary schedules. So I think I'd like to um share my screen. It's a complicated topic, so I think I'm just gonna touch on it, but I think it it's an important enough topic where I want to share um share this. This was emailed out, and there's a session Tim Sheehan and I are doing on, uh we're doing like instead of like coffee with the superintendent and curriculum director, we're doing it's around coffee time. We can obviously offer uh real coffee, uh but the virtual coffee will be peppy um in our session to be able to talk through the elementary schedules. Let me share my screen.
Can you, uh before you share, Dr. Morris, can we just check to see if there's any questions um the committees on the first bits that you've covered?
Yeah, sorry about that.
Yep. Mr. Demling.
Yeah, so I mean, I'll try to make this as short as possible. So the short version of my question is, because I'm not in these executive sessions, right, talking about the A P A negotiations is, so the big question on a lot of people's minds still is is how are negotiations going? And um I think I think most adults um in the community uh approach this question realistically, that nobody wants you to say anything to upset the apple cart. We understand this is an ongoing negotiation, and so uh if you're not able to share additional details at that at this time, that's understandable. That being said, um I have to ask you uh not only, I you know, the question, are there additional details? Are there additional details you could share about any progress that's been made? And I I have to frame it like that because from the point of view of parents, the last update that they have was the agreement, right, uh from now that's several weeks stale of um the in-person will be start no earlier than ten-one, and that's really it. Um there's there really is no bead, no sense that the community, the public has about are things going well? Should we expect slash hope for a resolution soon, soon-ish? Um uh are are there small or large things that have been agreed to that could be shared? Um uh you know, I and uh so there's a, not only a high level of anxiety, but there's there's preparations, right, that that parents need to make uh that uh depend on these these decisions. And I know you know this. I know that that everyone involved knows knows this. This is not news. Um but I just feel like since this is the question that we get asked constantly, uh it's just sort of part and parcel of this role here to kind of echo this question to you um to just politely put forward to you in this frame. So there you go.
Sure, so um Hala and Sarah Best can certainly jump in, but the way I would respond to that is, we are making progress in our negotiations, and we continue to meet. We have a couple meetings this week, uh and I think there's a mutual interest in coming to resolution as soon as possible, because as much as the community wants resolution, I think we're also hearing from staff members who who want, you know, I think everyone involved, all stakeholders, would like clarity uh moving forward, and I think everyone who's taking part in that is doing their best to try to move towards resolution, and we hope to get there soon. I don't know if there's anything that Hala or Sarah Best would like to add.
I would just, oh, sorry, okay. I can be acknowledged by the chair first.
Ms. Lloyd.
Thank you. I would like to say I have um a strong respect and gratefulness for the work that both sides, especially the union, has been doing. We're all working really hard to find some common ground and some some common areas where we will keep our kids safe and educate those that need it the most in the ways that are best. It's not easy. We all are working super hard, and I I'm grateful for yeah, I'm just really grateful for the work, because I, both sides have worked for hours and hours and hours on this. So thank you to the union.
Ms. Dancer.
Um regarding the professional development, um I thought people might like to hear a little bit about the conversation that I had with my son this weekend. Um he's a teacher at the middle school, and he was excited about the things that he's learned. Um and while he really prefers to be in front of a class um in-person, I think he's, you know, to me, it was just so great to hear him actually excited about the things that he can do and how good he thought that the professional development was. Um so I I just wanted to share that.
Thank you.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yeah, I just want to point out again that this is my new thing. It's not I M P math, and it's not the girls bathroom locker locker room renovations, but this, the idea of without having transportation, the inequities that go into some students being able to meet with their class and some not, it just drives me crazy. Thank you.
So I I did have a a question also, uh going back to one of your earlier topics on space um and and sort of the percentage of students that are coming back um or have expressed an interest in in being in-person learning. So um I think you had mentioned that we would be able to accommodate the the seventy percent of students generally in the buildings, and so I just wanted to clarify um with with regard to Crocker Farm students, because I know that that was sort of a question mark was, you know, about fifth um grades five and six, whether they would have to be hybrid or potentially move to the middle school for full ti- for full-time. Does that, does that impact sort of that that percentage in space utilization? Does that impact sort of how will be, how those students will be learning?
It does. We're still fine-tuning it. We still have, uh I don't have that document up, but I think there's still twenty-five to thirty students that were fam- or students' families that we're waiting to receive responses by, so that's why I'm being a little cautious in my statements, because um we want to get all the students. And again, those were not binding, so they could change by the time we get to Phase Two and Three. Um but you know, at Crocker Farm has a slightly lower so Crocker Farm has a slightly higher response rate desiring distance learning than some of our other elementary schools. So you know, I think we're optimistic that some of the space needs will be be able to be resolved there once we got to tier two and tier three, but until we get those last twenty to thirty families, it's a you know, we're speaking a little bit hypothetically, um but it's definitely not the picture that it looked like when we were talking about a hundred percent of students returning.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions before we move on to the next elementary schedule? Yep, okay.
Right, so I'm just gonna talk it through, because it's gonna be visually overwhelming to look at, so I figure a little preview might help. Um so what we, and the assistant principals, as well as the principal of Pelham School, were the primary drivers on this. One of the things that, going back to last spring, we had a group of teachers and par educators who got together about distance learning, and one of the things they noted at the elementary level was that um a couple of things mattered. One is there was a desire for more synchronous instruction. Um two was, there was a feeling that synchronous instruction for young students in particular made more sense to happen in small groups than having twenty-eight-year-olds on a call. It it doesn't really yield the kind of dialogue and inquiry that we want for our elementary school students. And the third is that we wanted to have consistency in a structure and a schedule um that was uh true across the district. And so if you if you go back to those documents, you can see more words, but essentially that phrasing of wanting to have structures, wanting to have small group, and wanting to have direct instruction for students. And so uh just through hours and hours and hours of work, and I want to thank them here, folks came up with it. I'm gonna show the master uh which um or excuse me, um the full schedule, uh and then I'll show a grade-level version of that. Um so it's gonna be a little hard to see. I'm gonna zoom in a little bit, and then I'll show you one that's a little easier to see. But one of the things you should notice right away, and it's okay if you can't see all the grade levels, is um that there's two schedules for each grade level, and that is because if we if we want to have small group, it means that we're juxtaposing, so if there's a class of twenty students, we're gonna juxtapose that class and break it into smaller groups of when they're receiving direct instruction. Um so we have whole-class staff morning meeting, and that's true for every grade level. Uh but you could see even in in grade one, where one group's doing more independent work or recorded mini lesson, the other group is doing literacy. So the teacher is essentially teaching similar lessons uh and going back and forth between two smaller groups. And that was how we could both reduce the amount of screen time for young kids, um but also have smaller groups where they're having much more dynamic, interactive dialogue. You know, I I just equated to this group. So there's fourteen people on the call right now. If it was five people, like when we get to Pelham, the opportunity for dialogue is significantly more the fewer the number of the people on the call is, and that's true even more so with young kids. So they were able to juxtapose a schedule where teachers can be with one group of students while the other group is doing more independent work or watching a mini lesson that is recorded um on a more regular basis. And so they were able to do that across grade levels. So I'll randomly pick a grade level. Okay, it's grade level three. So what you can see is that uh on the right, in Group A, they're having a literacy mini lesson, again, a recorded mini lesson. And then they're having small group instruction from their teacher. While that's happening, Group B is doing independent literacy, having a break. We want to build in breaks throughout the day. And then they're starting a math mini lesson, but then again, that's a recorded lesson. Um and then the teacher would flip over to work with Group B here uh while Group A is having a break in independent literacy. So um it is gonna be the case that teachers will be going back and forth between the groups for some of this. There are some opportunities, for instance, science and social studies to be a full group. That's more project-based, so students may not be on screen the whole time, but they're having some synchronous. There's a win block, which is a time where um special ed, E L L services can be offered in addition to during some of the small group times. It's also a place where instrumental music and some other electives uh can occur um across the district, which our instrumental music teachers always struggle with. How do you get students from Fort River and Pelham who both are at the same level in violin in the same place at the same time, which is, you can't. So there are some odd silver linings to this virtual um virtual approach. Again, this question, this schedule is just for virtual. Um but what it works out is, it keeps our our staff under, you know, the agreement of four hours of synchronous or asynchronous instruction a day. Uh it'll provides, you know, roughly two and a half hours of synchronous instruction uh for students. It might be a little more when you add specials and some other other areas, but it's predictable, it's reliable. Um it's consistent across grade levels and across schools, which is some of the concerns that we had last year. And it really gets at the instruction piece. Last year, you know, we know we provided a lot of resources for elementary families, and that was really challenging. Um and this is much, this is really focused on instruction. I think the last thing I'll say about it is, when you see independent choice, one of the things the district, and I want to thank Tim Sheehan and the other uh principals, is we've invested some of our CARES Act funds in high-quality online resources like Lexia Reading and some math programs that are intended to be independent and self, you know, uh that students, even at a young age, can can work on independently. And so as opposed to uh other choices, there may be other choices like a choice board where it'd be off-screen, but there are more choices for our students and families to have high-quality practice on their work uh than what we had last spring, when we didn't have access to all these programs. We didn't have time to vet what are high-quality science, math, and and literacy programs online. And the reality is, there's a lot of good stuff out there that we have not previously invested time, energy, and resources into. It's also the case that that CARES Act fund, we are dedicating to make sure that these products are effective. And we're also thinking, when we're in in-person education, we may be able to utilize these. Um you know, one of our concerns is that it may not be sustainable to make, keep these programs on when our CARES Act money is no longer with us. Uh but for the time being, we feel much more secure about some of the independent work being high-quality than what what we had to do last year, and much less uh adult or caregiver-dependent, because we know that families are gonna be out of the home. It may be the caregiver may be an eighth-grade student watching their younger sibling or cousin uh who, and that eighth-grade student may have all the work that they have to do as well. So you know, to make a long story short, um the focus on small-group instruction, the focus at the elementary level in particular, is on synchronous instruction uh occurring throughout the school day. Um we'll do a session on Thursday. We're gonna try to communicate as soon as we can. Um have teachers communicate, you know, this A group, B group thing. Uh but it was the only way we could come up with that avoided the scenario of large-group online instruction being uh at the core of what we do and what we know as research, and as well as our own experience last spring, is that's not the most effective approach for young students, elementary students. So uh again, I'll leave it there. So uh, again, I'll leave it there, just given the time, um, but wanted to share that update as well.
Okay, thank you. Um, questions or comments from the committee? Ms. Seager?
Uh, I understand that this is the fully remote model, at least for the beginning of the year. What does, how, how does the remote model differ for the students that choose not to come back um, in November?
It would, this would be the model throughout the year.
Throughout the year, for all students attending the school, whether or not they're there.
Exactly. So any student who's attending remotely at any point, this is the schedule.
Thank you.
And to note, at the beginning of the year, it's gonna start a little slower, right? We wanna focus much more on community building in a remote environment at the beginning of the year. But you know, as we get into academic um, levels, and the GOA stuff is very clear. You wanna, you wanna build a relationship before you go heavy on curriculum when you're talking about, you know, second grade. Uh, probably any grade, but particularly with our younger students. But it's really working up to this as our, our model for instruction um, that we can guarantee across grade levels, across the four schools and two districts.
Any other questions? Mr. Demling?
So it, it seems like a, maybe I'm reading it wrong, but it's, it seems like a lot of transitions. Um, so if you're a young student trying to manage those transitions, it seems like you're gonna need a lot of assistance. Um, and I understand that at the youngest grades, you're using seesaw, and so that's, that'll help a little bit. But um, you know, it, even, even the best, most well-intentioned wayfinding, it seems like a whole lot of clicks in this program and that's online service. And even if it's, you know, really well-designed, a lot of, you know, you know, this small group to that small group. Um, I just, I, I, I wonder about sort of like, you know, field testing those sort of small group leapfrogging from, from place to place. Um, what, what our thoughts are, are about um, making sure that we, you know, keep track of everybody over the course of the, the digital day there.
Yeah, so some of it's about a nomenclature and ways you can set up Google meets with a consistent password. You know, um, the, the best case study we have last, from last year is Comenantes, because Comenantes builds in lots of transitions, because you have English teachers, you have Spanish teachers, um, multiple of each um, last year. And they were able to create a nomenclature and wording of, you know, for this Google meet, you know, every day it has the same reliable, to, to enter the, the Google meet, it's the same word every day. And this was kindergarten families, and that was pretty effective. So I think we have some positive examples from our own district about how to organize the day. Um, even though there are these transitions that work, we're also looking at paraeducators to be able to assist with some of those transitions. We feel like it's a really good role for paraeducators to play, to help navigate the wayfinding, uh, because the teachers may be going back and forth, but the paraeducators may be a little more constant. And for the mini lesson versus small group, right, so much like I'm doing here, the mini lesson, the recorded lesson can operate without a transition to go to small group, right? So people can be on this, I'm presenting this, I could be easily presenting a video that everyone was watching right now, and there's not another transition from a, like, one Google meet to another. It's really just that I stop presenting the screen and then the work starts. Um, so I think that, that makes the most sense when we've seen more simplistic, you know, and there are some examples uh, where, you know, everyone has an hour of math and everyone has an hour of literacy. Um, so there's plenty of districts um, that have that model, and they're doing whole group for long stretches of time. And so for us, we'd rather deal with the complexity of wayfinding than throwing our, uh, that's not a nice way to say it, I'm just tired. Um, then, then I'll, then avoiding complexity and working out nomenclature um, and resulting with long stretches of time with twenty students uh, on a synchronous call. Um, I mean, you can create breakout groups, and you know, I think the middle school had a lot of success with that in particular last year, um, organizing that, but that has its own transition too, right? Because if you're organizing breakout groups, then it means people go into other Google meets. And so we found this to be the best compromise, but I think for, for the community and the public to know is, you know, that what looks like a transition may not be a transition, an actual transition in real time, that one could leave a Google meet open and students get a break, and they come back to the same Google meet, and there's a different teacher in it, if that makes sense.
Mr. Manino?
Maybe I don't understand this. What's to prevent a student in group A from overhearing a lecture that's being given in group B? Like today's meeting, I was not a part of the regional meeting, but I clicked, and then you were meeting, so I clicked out, because I don't go, go to, I don't get into when the Pelham School Committee is organized. I'm not quite sure how you exclude students from one group from activities in another group.
You just don't give them the Google meet to enter.
Okay, yeah.
So for instance, Ron, let's pretend that the region was meeting uh, tomorrow, and we didn't invite you.
Yes.
You wouldn't know how to get in, right?
We have one common code to get in. So they're gonna have two codes.
Correct.
Between group A and group B?
Okay, okay. Okay, okay, now I understand.
You all have been working so nicely together all summer. We didn't do that to you, but yes.
Any other questions? Okay.
I don't think you can see me, Allison.
No, your video is off.
It, it's not off, it's.
Oh, on, on my screen, I just see, okay.
Okay, well, that's interesting. Okay, um, I'm seeing my video. Anyways, I, I have a question. Is it okay if I ask it?
Yeah.
Um, so I guess he, here's my question, is we have essentially, potentially three groups of students then could be remote, or correct me if I'm wrong about this. So we have those who are choosing to be remote for the entire year, and then we have those who are choosing to be in-person. Are we, and I, because we're not gonna be having teachers once we hopefully go into the phase where we have people in person, are we essentially gonna be taking and having then a group see essentially who's going to be full-time, remote? And will they be getting separate instruction from those who choose to be? So during the remote period, will those who are going to be remote for the full year be having separate remote instruction from a separate group of teachers?
So this is what you're seeing with A and B is within one classroom, um, with one teacher. But if you wanna go down that road, it's a complex road, but I'm happy to do it. Um, so.
Tonight.
Second nutshell, and see if that confuses you more, which is maybe a fifty percent likelihood, or actually clarifies. Um, but it's a really important question, um, and we're gonna be communicating this family, so I'm glad you asked it. So at kindergarten and first grade, we ask for binding decisions for families. Um, and for those grade levels, we've identified who's gonna be the in-person teachers, who's gonna be the virtual teachers, and the idea is that that would be, that would stay static. Um, and they're also the first students who would enter, you know, the school. So that's really important, because when we think about October first, right, that would be essentially two weeks of instruction, and then students come in. So that virtual instruction is really helping prepare students for their re-entry into school, as opposed to looking at a longer period of time. So the, the people who get their K and one placement later this week, the families, um, and that'll be clear, should assume that that's the placement um, that's going on, you know, I don't wanna say indefinitely, but for the duration. At grade two to six, we have non-binding information. We also have a tremendous amount of HR work to do with um, staff members who requested remote placement but need to meet with HR or provide documentation to HR. So at grades two to six, um, we are going to start the year um, with the knowledge that when students return in person, there may be some shifts of personnel, and there may be some shifts, shifts of students. Um, we know that some families are gonna change their minds between virtual and uh, and in-person between now and either late October, or mid, mid to late October, or mid-November. So we are placing with some of that in mind, but we're not creating year-long virtual classes, uh, because we don't feel like we have sufficient staff or student information to be able to do that. And, and we'll be explicit on that communication. Um, Pelham's a little different, but Pelham has its own meeting at the tail end of this, so we can talk Pelham stuff perhaps in, in a couple of minutes. Um, but I think there is a distinction between K and one versus two to six on both the binding nature of students and also how soon they'd be back in building. So maybe I confuse things, maybe not, but at least you know that there's a difference between K and one and two to six, if nothing else.
So just following up, so, so then when we're doing all of this place submit, we have a third factor that, because normally we would try to like, get a nice balanced mix of students across, you know, district, you'd consider all sorts of other factors. But now we are considering, at least for the early kids, what their preference is in terms of their teacher assignments.
Absolutely. For K and one, yeah, we felt like it's in best interest not to have a, a quick transition two weeks into the year, especially with that age group. And we think about our kindergartners, uh, they've never been to our schools before, for the most part, unless they were in preschool. At Crocker Farm, it happened to be a preschool. So you know, vast majority of the kindergartners have never been in our schools before. We really don't wanna start them and then push a transition a couple of weeks later. We want them to build community that lasts, um, and we wanna do that at grade one, two. We don't have enough information to do that at grades two and six, and we also have a little more time for that community to build and for potential transition to happen when in-person starts. It's all a crazy science, uh, that our principals and assistant principals are managing. Um, you know, I saw some quote the other day that uh, what we used to think was complex is now like, the easiest things that we're managing, you know? And I really can wanna thank, uh, I had a number of conference calls over the Labor Day weekend with assistant principals and principals of the elementary school, working on all this information and working from all this data, and you know, just wanna appreciate how many variables we're managing. And I think you mentioned it in your comment, Ms. Spitzer, uh, that we never had to consider before. It's, it's absolutely true.
Okay. Any other questions? No? Okay. Was that your full update?
I am done, yeah.
Okay. Good. So moving along um, to uh, our next item, which is future agenda planning. Um, I will look at what um, our notes were from the last time we have. I will just say for the Amherst and Regional School Committees, um, our, our superintendent evaluation forums are due on Monday. Um, and so we'll be looking to schedule our meetings, um, uh, what, what is that date? The twenty-first? To review superintendent, is that correct? No, uh, my second.
Yeah, that's what I have, yeah. Um, I think there was a question last time about a policy related to Title IX changes. Our attorney said that probably by next week, he'll, he'll have a draft of something to share with the committee.
Okay. So that could be the twenty-second as well?
Probably.
Is it possible that we'll go for a week without a meeting? Okay, and uh, we also had um, a couple other um, update on uh, performing arts and clubs conversation. I don't know if that would be ready for the twenty-second, no. Um, adhering about distance learning. Um, and I don't know that sixth grade would be ready for the region meeting at that point either, so. Seems like fall update policy and superintendent evaluation. Um, it'd be good. Mr. Demling?
Yeah, so should we just presume that if there's a major update on the fall twenty-twenty to be had, that that meeting will just get called and scheduled? Like, for example, if, if that's ready to happen on the fourteenth, the fifteenth, by the sixteenth, that will just get, you'll, that will just get scheduled? As opposed to waiting two weeks into the twenty-second?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Any other thoughts, adds, questions, comments? So the meeting on the twenty-second, I don't know, does that, I don't, I don't know if that needs to be all three committees at that point, or just Amherst and Region, is that? Sound correct? I guess we can, we have time to discuss this, so. Okay. So if nobody has anything else that they wanna bring up, then we can move on. Okay, um, warrant report, um, I do not have any for Amherst, does?
I don't have any for the region.
You do?
I do not.
Okay. Um, and gifts, I don't believe we have any gifts this evening. Okay. So with that?
I move to adjourn the Amherst School Committee.
So. Did you second that, Mr. Harrington?
I, I think Mr. Demling beat me to the punch.
I'm gonna judge by who's, who's got the three green dots on their, on their thing, who said it. Um, moved by Spitzer, second, and by Demling, um, roll call vote, Mr. Demling?
Demling aye.
Mr. Harrington?
Harrington aye.
Ms. Lord?
Lord aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer aye.
McDonald aye. The Amherst uh, committee is adjourned. I will now move to adjourn the Regional uh, School Committee, our second.
Second.
Moved by McDonald, second by Kenny, roll call vote, Mr. Demling?
Demling aye.
Mr. Harrington?
Harrington aye.
Ms. Kenny?
Kenny aye.
Ms. Lord?
Lord aye.
Ms. Seager?
Seager aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer aye.
Ms. Stanser? I'm reading your lips, I think you said aye. Um, uh, Mr. Sullivan?
Sullivan aye.
And McDonald aye. The region is now adjourned.